Welcome, everybody, to the City of Farmers Branch City Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 4th. If you would, please stand, join me for our invocation and pledges. Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight to discuss the matters of our city, we humbly ask for your guidance and wisdom. May our deliberations be marked by compassion, fairness, and deep commitment to the well-being of all of our citizens. Grant us the strength to make decisions that reflect the needs of our community and uphold the values we hold dear. We thank you for the privilege of serving and ask that you bless our efforts in this room this evening. Amen. If you would, join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge? Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. All righty, first up this evening is going to be some entertainment with presentations from the Firehouse Theater showcasing highlights from their upcoming production, Million Dollar Quartet. Come on up, guys.
Yeah, I just locked right in there. Yeah, would have made more sense to go that way. Hello, good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Owen Beans. I'm a Farmers Branch resident and the artistic producer of the Firehouse Theater. We are opening our 2025 season this Thursday with the musical Million Dollar Quartet, and we're excited to share a quick sneak peek with you tonight. Tickets are on sale now and can be purchased at www.thefirehousetheater.com. Now, a bit about the show. On December 4th, 1956, one man brought Johnny Cash, Jerry Lee Lewis, Carl Perkins, and Elvis Presley to play together for the first and only time. His name was Sam Phillips. The place was the legendary Sun Records in Memphis, Tennessee. That night, they made rock and roll and music history. Million Dollar Quartet features an incredible score of rock and roll, gospel, R&B, and country hits such as Blue Slayed Shoes, Great Balls of Fire, Folsom Prison Blues, Whole Lot of Shakin' Going On, Hound Dog, and so many more. And it is performed live onstage by world-class actor musicians who, in our production, are all North Texas locals that we are so very lucky to have right here in Farmers Branch. The cast of Million Dollar Quartet includes Joey O'Reilly as the killer, Jerry Lee Lewis, Bryson Morland as the father of Rockabilly, Carl Perkins, Gideon Etheridge as the king of rock and roll, Elvis Presley, and Ben Metters as the man in black, Johnny Cash. All right, take it away, boys.
Guys, thank you all very much. That was great. What a way to start out a council meeting. That should have put a smile on everybody's face, yes? All right. Well, next up is item G1, which is recognition of Farmers Branch Fire Department Medic 131 and Truck 131, NTEC, as well as the bystander that initiated CPR for their actions in saving the life of a cardiac arrest victim on November 5th, 2024. So I'm going to invite everybody to come down. Chief Evans is going to help me.
Yes, sir. So Truck 131, Medic 131, NTEC, our dispatcher, that took the call. We also have Medical City Dallas and Heart. These are the hospital that we took our patients, patient to, and that treated and took care of the patient after pre-hospital care. So everybody that took part in the care in our patient for survivability is, everybody's present.
So, on behalf of the City of Farmers Branch and the City Council, I'm honored to recognize and present this ceremonial item tonight to the Farmers Branch Medic 131 and Truck 131, NTEC, as well as Devin Gunesimo. I hope I didn't pronounce your name wrong. For, and everybody here, for their actions in saving a life. Staff members from the fire department are obviously here to assist in all this, so I'm going to turn it over to Chief, Captain Terry Evans.
So I'm going to give a little bit of background for this great story that you're going to hear here today. And then, after I'm speaking, Medical City ICU Director is going to speak on the hospital side of what they saw and what they, things that they encountered. So on November 5th, 2024, at 9:15 PM, Farmers Branch Fire Department Truck 131 and Medic 131 were dispatched to cardiac arrest with bystander CPR in progress. Upon crew arrival, the crews found the patient cyanotic with agonal respirations lying on the ground with good quality bystander CPR being performed. Their crews quickly took over and found the patient to be ventricular fibrillation. After delivering a total of four shocks, medications being administered and innovating the patient, crews were able to get a pulse back. The patient was then transported to the ambulance to Medical City Heart and Spine. A twelve-leaf was taken while en route to the hospital to find the patient having ST-segment elevation myocardial infarction, essentially just having a heart attack. Shortly after, the patient went back into cardiac arrest, and the crews initiated CPR once, once again. Upon arrival, the hospital staff took over compressions and regained a pulse. The incident underscores the critical importance of out-of-hospital chain of survival. As outlined by the American Heart Association, every link in the chain was executed seamlessly from the timely activation of emergency response and high-quality CPR defibrillation, advanced resuscitation, post-cardiac arrest care, and eventual recovery. So at this time, I'll hand it off to Dr. from our ICU director of the Med City Heart, Dr. Lepton.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Lepton. I'm the CV ICU Director and ECMO Director at Medical City Heart and Spine, and I actually was on call that night when all this took place, and the paramedics and the bystander CPR were, were key to having the outcome that we all want to have every time that something like this happens and somebody that's either having a heart attack and having cardiac arrest is brought to us. I'm in this situation. They called me and kind of gave me the story about what had transpired and, you know, since, so 25 years ago, since they, kind of the defibrillator got put into practice, we've really had no change in, you know, out-of-hospital cardiac arrest survival to discharge specifically from a neurologically intact or having good brain function after all of this. And so, over the past several years, Medical City Heart and Spine and Plano have developed an ECMO program. And so essentially, in this case, I came into the hospital in and out of cardiac arrest, and when I got to the emergency room, we're in and out of cardiac arrest, so I put him on what's called VA ECMO, which is basically a lung, heart and lung bypass machine with two big cannulas in the growing, and we were able to restore perfusion to, most importantly, the brain, the kidneys, all of your other organs while we have time to figure out what's going on with the, with the heart. In this case, we got on ECMO, we went down to the cath lab, and one of our interventional cardiologists did a heart cath, and we were expecting to find that he was going to have a blockage causing this a heart attack. But we went in there and actually all of the coronary arteries were, were clean and there were no blockages. And so, you know, through a bunch of different doctors, different specialists, you know, we were able to ascertain that over the past several months, he'd been having heart failure symptoms. And so, this was an acute arrhythmia from his heart failure. And so, we were able to get things optimized. Over several days, we were able to come off of ECMO. We put a specialized heart pump, called it an Impella, in that helped us get off ECMO and transition to just this small heart pump. We were able to get the breathing tube out, get him awake, start working with therapy. Over time, we were able to wean down the heart pump, and his native heart function began to improve from initially less than 5% squeezed to around 40% at the time he left. So incredible improvement. So, you know, at the end of all of this, we were able to put in a pacemaker defibrillator and get things as optimized as well. And this is a perfect success story of somebody that was dead that came into us, was dead when the paramedics got there and because of their heroic efforts and their great CPR, was able to get to us, were we able to do some special things in the hospital to get him better, and most importantly, get him better with a brain that was still functioning top-notch and able to get home to his loved ones. And he actually, after almost three weeks, I believe, went from the hospital to, to home, which is quite incredible. Most people at least have to, you know, go to do some rehab and things, but he was able to go straight from the hospital to home to sitting in front of us today. So, we'd like to thank the paramedics and the bystanders that were administered the CPR, because without that, nothing that we do at the hospital will be successful.
So with that being said, the patient, the family came by the station not too long ago, and we talked about what really transpired and can we get a backstory and everything. So, what happened from the time of call, the patient's son actually started CPR, and the youngest boy, he ran out to the neighbor and got Devin, who just had a CPR class done not too long ago, and...
By you.
Yes, by me. And so, and then took over CPR, and patients here today, if it was not for bystander CPR, this would not, a different outcome, for sure. So, it's really contributed to your family and to your neighbor. So, look out for one another, take care of one another, because you don't know when the next time this might happen, and it might be you or your neighbor. So, please sign up for the CPR, bystander CPR class that I give on a quarterly basis, and you can reach me at cpr@farmersbranchtx.gov. So, without further ado, we have two awards to be given out, one to Peter and one to Devin. So, who we got? Devin? Thank you so much, Gary. Last one up is Peter. And lastly, I'd like to thank NTEC, who's helping mom out with CPR instructions and getting us the information we needed as we are arriving on scene. So, just kind of just close the loop with everything with the American Heart Association says with the chains of survivability. Every chain was flawlessly done, and so, if we continue to learn this way, we will have better success each time. So, another round of applause, and if you could come up here, sir.
Yeah. It's a little hard, but one of the things I was thinking about leading up to today is the wondering why, against all those odds, that somebody survives something like this, and y'all are looking at it all right up here. All the people from the fire department and the hospital and my neighbor and my sons, my daughter first raising the alarm that something was going on. Everything had to align up perfectly, and it did, for a reason. That reason, I may never know why, but I'm reserved to let that question go away, but the real why is right here, standing next to me. So I want to thank them all, and I can't thank them enough, but they returned a son, a father, a brother, you know, back to his family that was gone. Thank you very much.
Daniel Latimer, Fire Chief, and just, just have nothing to add on to that, can't follow that, but this is, this is why we do what we do. And so, City Council, I keep saying this, the city management, our residents, because we keep coming back up here, but thank you for your commitment. Thank you for supporting our mission, because this is what you get. This is what the, this, these men and women from Farmers Branch Fire Department give us every day they're out there. We've had so many success stories. It's because of their service, it's because of the leadership we have up here. We got the leadership back here with our assistant chiefs, our EMS captain, our battalion chief, our admin captain, we got our captains here. It's the leadership of these men and women, it's the paramedics, it's the CPR training we got going on. We have a great thing. So thank you again for the support. We just love our people in Farmers Branch.
You want a picture? Yeah. Can you get a picture with the crew?
Sure.
There you go. Give it to the crew, here. Give it to them, go with the crew.
Thank you all. Thank you all so much. Medical City, thank you all.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks. There's the real heroes out there. Okay, great. Yes, we do, every day. Oh, no.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next up will be our items of community interest.
Thank you, mayor. So before we get started, we have a little clarifying statement. So regarding the January 2021, 2025, City Council Item L13352 Chaperal Permit Extension. So, on January 21st, staff presented information to the City Council regarding a permit extension for 3352 Chaperal Drive. And we just want to clarify that the information presented was correct and accurate, and that the cost for both the permit and the extension was correct. So, on to our items of community interest. Are you looking to save money on your electric bill? If your contract ends between March 1st and June 30th this year, our power switch program can help you get better rates. It's completely free to join, and there's no obligation to accept any of the offers. The winning electricity rates will be announced pretty soon on February 24th. Want to register for the program? Just scan the QR code or visit our website by March 26th. And heads up, even if you've joined the program before, you'll need to sign up again for this round. It's a super simple, easy way to save on electricity costs this year. Join the Farmers Branch Police Department for their Coffee with a Cop event on Saturday, March 1st, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at PJ's Coffee, right off of Midway. Come grab a cup of coffee with your local officers. Get a close-up look at the patrol vehicles, squad cars, motorcycles, maybe try on some gear, and enjoy a casual conversation with FBPD. Are you ready to make your mark at the library? Design a bookmark for the Color of Our World, or Color Our World Summer Reading Theme. Starting on March 1st, you can grab an entry form at the library and start creating. All bookmarked designs have to be returned to Mansky Library by March 31st to be considered in the contest. We will then display every design during National Library Week, which is April 6th through 12th, and our Arts and Culture Committee will pick winners from each age group. Come join the fun and add your splash of color, splash of color to Mansky Library. And then, as always, you can sign up for City E News at farmersbranchtx.gov or by scanning the QR code on the screen. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Ashlyn. Appreciate it. Next up are citizen comments. Public comment, just so you know, is your opportunity to address your city, the Farmers Branch, and our elected officials directly about issues that are important to you and your community. There's a three-minute time limit for each person to speak. No disparaging or inflammatory remarks directed at any member of the City Council or city staff will be allowed. So when I call your name, please come forward. contributed roughly $50 million worth of value to our community through the years. Third-party information can validate that. That's not my opinion. That's something that can actually be looked up and validated out there if you want to take the time to do that. We originally reached out to the city of Farmers Branch in October of 2018 regarding a vacant parcel at 13309 Josie Lane. We were instructed at that time that the parcel would not be sold individually, but if I was able to procure surrounding properties, the city would consider selling it to us after we made those financial commitments to the surrounding properties. Following these directives, I purchased three townhomes and the former Edward Jones building. And the acquisition cost for those properties alone were just under $2 million. From there, the city then agreed to go ahead and sell us the vacant parcel at 13309 Josie Lane Farmers Branch to me with the intention of rezoning and developing the combined parcels into townhomes. This even went so far that the new comp plan included our townhome project into townhomes, which you guys have all seen and approved. After the city completed an appraisal at that time, we agreed to go under a purchase price of $200,000 for 13309 Josie Lane. From that point in time, I engaged a civil engineer, architect, and landscape architect to work on plans. And per the contract generated by the city of Farmers Branch, the city required final design and approval on our project and our townhomes. Throughout the process of trying to obtain city approval for our townhomes, we went through four different revisions. This required the civil engineer, the architectural plans, and the landscape plans to be completely redone four separate times. This obviously cost us valuable time, along with hundreds of thousands of dollars in revisions. Since this time, it is our understanding the city has changed their position concerning involvement with developers, no longer providing, I'm going to go over, no longer providing influence and mandating final approval on designs and projects. However, that didn't help our cost or our time required to mandate these changes. The city then continued to engage in other conversations, meetings, and provide staff comments as late of August of 2024. And we even came before this council for approval in February of 2024 in this project.
Tom, I'll give you one more minute.
That's all I need. Thank you. Since then, the city is claiming a by-the-book approach, choosing to have 13309 Josie Lane reappraised, placed on MLS, in an effort to accept bids for the final sale of this process. Of course, this process doesn't count the previous request of the agreement I had with the city, an agreement in which we were told if we purchased all of the surrounding areas, the city would consider selling this parcel and would never sell this parcel by itself. So instead, on top of this, the city has decided to increase the cost of the parcel based on a new appraisal. And as I mentioned in the beginning of my comments, I'm not going to take sole value for the improved value in the Dallas area. However, we have absolutely continued to the increased property value in the Farmers Branch community. That's validated third part. So I'll cut myself a little short here, but I will say, council members, my plan is in place. It's been in place for seven years. I have a plan. I presented a plan. My plan is a part of the, the new comp plan that was approved by council members in this community. My plan brings a roughly $30 million investment to the city of Farmers Branch. My plan will bring needed housing to our community. My plan will benefit and beautify our parks in our community. My plan is the only one like it in Farmers Branch. And my plan provides the highest and best use for our city. So I'm asking, do you guys please consider and accept my offer that we have put together, that we have been working on for seven years? Let's continue what we started. Let's finish what we began with. My plan is in place and ready to go. I appreciate the extra time. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. That is all, folks, we had signed up to speak this evening. So next up is our consent agenda. I will tell you that item J5 on our consent agenda is being tabled. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item J5?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
All second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. If you would, please indicate your vote accordingly. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next up is item K1, public hearing. Conduct public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number 3897 for a zoning amendment for a self-storage facility on approximately 9.72 acres located at 11410 Mathis Avenue within the Plant Development District number 22 and take appropriate action.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Sarah Bergman, Deputy Director of Planning. So this property is located along Mathis Avenue near the southern city limit line. The site is developed with a warehouse building consisting of three suites. And the applicant is proposing to use two of these suites for a self-storage facility, which does require an amendment to the Plan Development 22 PD 22 zoning. So this development is a little bit unique in that rather than storage of household items, the tenant offers leased spaces to small-scale commercial businesses. So storage spaces for commercial use rather than personal. The definition in the comprehensive zoning ordinance of self-storage facility does not distinguish between those two. So this is the best classification for the proposed use. If approved, the uses within the facility would be limited to those shown on the screen, primarily warehouse and distribution, as well as there is a shared conference space within the facility that would allow for office use. Because self-storage facility is not explicitly called out as part of PD 22, there is no parking requirement associated with it. So with this request, the applicant proposes to align with our comprehensive zoning ordinance, which requires one space per 400 square feet of office use and one space per 2,000 square feet of warehousing. In addition, because this is an existing building with loading doors facing towards public right-of-way, the applicant is proposing to install some new screening in the form of landscaping and shrubs along Mathis Avenue. And other than the landscape installation, no other site modifications are proposed. Here's some photos of the existing building as well as the interior storage spaces. And this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. No opposition has been received. And on January 13th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously or by a vote of six to one, not unanimously. I also want to note that there is a code and building violation history specific to this site that is included within your packet. That is important context, of course, but it is separate from the use discussion that's being considered tonight. And so with this request, the question is really whether a self-storage facility is appropriate in this location. The code and building violation history is still active. Enforcement is ongoing and will have to be addressed prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued if this request is approved. Zoning is kind of the first step in the situation. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here tonight as well.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilman Roman?
Don't have anything.
Councilwoman Bennett?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Reed?
I did have one question. I saw the outside doors. Do any of those doors lead into storage units?
The majority of the doors lead into the corridors that are used to access the interior units.
Okay, thank you.
You talk about the dock doors?
Yeah, the dock doors.
That might be something, just to make sure that we're getting. While we're waiting for that, Councilman Jackson?
Actually, the reason why I ask is that the definition of self-storage requires that all entrances to the units be from that common corridor. So if one of those doors leads into a storage unit, then it wouldn't qualify as self-storage.
That's a great point. The, if a dock door led into an individual unit, that unit by itself would not meet the definition for a warehouse or would not be able to receive a separate certificate of occupancy. So because this is part of an enclosed, single development, the self-storage category would still apply. So in this case, it's still the best classification.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sarah. So Ready Spaces is the current owner?
They're a tenants.
Tenants, okay. And there are currently outstanding code violations on that property?
That's correct.
Committed by who? Ready Spaces or?
Yes, the current occupant.
Okay, so those will all have to be remedied prior to a new certificate of occupancy?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Can you share what types of code violations we're talking about here?
Yes, absolutely. And it's detailed in the report. The applicant completed modifications to the building interior work without permits. They've been operating without a certificate of occupancy and the use is something that's not allowed under current zoning. So violations have been issued for all of those. Enforcement is ongoing. This is seen as the first step towards compliance.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Councilman Neal?
So have they been in operation with these violations as far as we know? And if so, how long have they been in this violation of?
So the work without permits was discovered in September of 2023. It's documented in the report. A code enforcement case was opened immediately. Citations have been issued. We've been working with our current legal counsel as well as legal counsel at that time to follow the correct procedure to address it.
Okay, so there's still some violations pending to be resolved and they have been in operation since September 23.
That's correct.
With violations, okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Did we get a definitive answer on the dock door question?
There are, yes. There are a few units.
Okay. Why don't you just, for the record, please state your name, address, and then you can answer.
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. For the record, my name is Daniel Box and I'm a zoning attorney with Winstead PC, offices located at 2728 North Harwood in Dallas. Thanks for having me this evening. If you'd like, for now, I'll go ahead and just answer that specific question. Otherwise, I can open up to a more general presentation. But for now, those dock doors do lead to a couple of private units. There are, there are some units that have direct access to private, to those dock doors, yes. Some of them lead just the corridors.
So if, if there is, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, if there's dock door access to some of the units, does that change your status from self-storage to warehouse?
No, a warehouse would be limited to a single tenant. So self-storage facility is still the best use classification for this type of development. I will say in researching this use and preparing the request, staff did contact several other cities to see what they classify this type of use as, and it can range. Not all cities consider this self-storage. Other consider this logistics center, co-warehousing space. There's kind of a range. And so one option may be to come back in the future with a new and enlisted use category and pursue that route. But as staff has looked at this and worked with our attorney, self-storage facility is the classification that this facility can move forward with. So it remains the same.
Council, any other questions on that? Okay, seeing none. Hold on. Let me just get to my. Yes, this item, this is a public hearing. I do not have anybody signed up to speak on it. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
Sure. I'll, I'll be very brief. I think Sarah summarized it very nicely. Essentially, what we have here is a situation in which we have new uses trying to fit into old use categories. When we had done our initial diligence into the site and looked at the uses allowed under the existing PD, we were under the impression that we would fall neatly into the warehouse use category. We thought that we just had smaller warehouse units within a larger warehouse space, which is why we proceeded to occupy and believe that we were doing so legally. Obviously, that, that ended up being discovered that that was not the case. We continued the conversation with staff and we're very grateful to them for the way in which they've cooperated with us to try to work this issue out. And so we, we had conversations with them from, I think they said the initial violation was in September of 2023. We had conversations as to how to proceed with the zoning up until March of 2023. And we buttoned up the final missing pieces of the zoning application finally submitted in July. And so that brings us in front of you today. So we think that this is a creative, adaptive reuse of the space that we're excited to bring to the city. We think by having these smaller units, it attracts local businesses to occupy the space, which we also think is, is a great advantage. And then I think the last thing that I'll say is because we are amending the PD, it also gives us the opportunity to install enhanced landscaping there at the front of the site, which is important because it's, we have front-loaded dock doors. So we think that we're doing our best to kind of rectify an unfortunate situation, which really exists because of a confusion in use classification. And we humbly submit our request today. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Councilman? Councilwoman? Yes, sir.
May I make a motion that we approve?
Hold on, hold on. We're still questions.
No, I don't have a question. I was just going to move to close the public hearing.
Yeah, we need to do that. I didn't know if they had any questions. Okay. Now entertain motion to close public hearing and act on the motion.
May I move to close the public hearing on K1?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing on this? Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you. And any further discussion? Seeing none.
May I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 3897?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. If you would, please indicate your vote. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. That concludes the public part of our regular meeting. We are now going to go back and finish three study session items that we did not get to finish earlier in the evening. And then after that, the council will go into executive session. So our next item up is item C8, which is provide a six-month status update for the garage conversion amnesty program.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Danielle Summers, Director of Community Services. Tonight I bring you an update, six-month update for the garage conversion amnesty program. So currently, a little background that I created, the garage conversion program was approved by City Council in July of 2024. The program was created to benefit many homeowners in our community who have garage conversions without a permit. The program will begin, I'm sorry, the program will bring conversion and compliance and prevent future garage construction requirements. So current statistics from when the program began, we found that we had 1,393 single-family residents that show from the street that they had converted their garages. We did further research and found that 358 of those homes were permitted through the previous permit system. That left 1,035 homes that we could find.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. If you would please indicate your vote. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. That concludes the public part of our regular meeting. We are now going to go back and finish three study session items that we did not get to finish earlier in the evening. And then after that, the council will go into executive session. So our next item up is item C8, which is provide a six-month status update for the garage conversion amnesty program.
Good evening, Council Mayor Danielle Summers, Director of Community Services. Tonight I bring you an update, six-month update for the garage conversion amnesty program. So currently, a little background that I created, the garage conversion program was approved by City Council in July of 2024. The program was created to benefit many homeowners in our community who have garage conversions without a permit. The program will begin, I'm sorry, the program will bring conversion and compliance and prevent future garage construction requirements. So current statistics from when the program began, we found that we had 1,393 single-family residents that show from the street that they had converted their garages. We did further research and found that 358 of those homes were permitted through the previous permit system. That left 1,035 homes that we could find, find no records of permits on. So currently, we've been in the program for six months. We've had 62 permit applications received, 42 permits were issued, 20 permits in the inspection and plan review process currently. And so we're going to continue outreach to see if we can get more traction and get more people to apply. So we have created flyers in Spanish and English that we've mailed out to all the residents in their water bills. And then we've also mailed them out directly to the residents that we knew did not have a permit for their garage conversions. We also mailed them out directly to them. We've posted the flyer on social media and our website. We have frequently asked questions on, on our website. And we also try to hand out flyers in any of our engagements that we do for the city to try to get the information out, try to answer questions and be available when somebody asks. For our future outreach, we're going to do a second mailing to the residents that have not applied to, at this point. We're going to continue posting our flyers on social media. We also will continue any social, any events that we have with the city will continue handing out flyers and be, being available to answer questions. Code enforcement also, when they go out and do inspections or run, meet with any residents, they also will, if they see that they have a garage conversion, they will speak to them, give them a flyer and explain what the conversion program is to let them know what their benefit of applying would be. At the nine-month point, we are currently creating door hangers. So when we hit about the nine-month point of the program, we are going to go out and hang door hangers on the people that we know, or the residence homes that we know have not applied yet. And we are also currently working with commu- communications to create a video that will hopefully help explain a little bit more about what the program is, what the benefit is to the residents and try to get a little bit more information out there and the appeal to it and try to see if we can get a little bit more traction. We'll put that on social media. We'll put it on our website and get it out as much as we can so that people can see that we're trying to, to benefit them, their homes. And that's what I have. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Danielle. Councilman Roman?
Thank you for the presentation. So in letters that are being sent to the individuals that we know have a converted garage, what is the messaging? Is it, is it that we've identified that there's somebody who would benefit from this program and, and is letting them know that they need to take advantage of this program? Or is it just sort of a, hey, we have a program, consider taking advantage of it?
So it's a flyer that we created at the beginning of this program that we mailed out to everybody that gives information about what the program is about, what it's for, what, what you need to do. We don't specifically say, we know you have a garage conversion. We just tried to create a general flyer to let everybody know that if you have this, this is going to benefit you.
Do you think it would be helpful to, and, and the reason I'm asking if it would be helpful for you guys to indicate in that letter that you've identified that they are a candidate for this program? Part of what I've encountered online is people don't know if they even need to do anything. And I've always just encouraged them to call the number that was on the flyers. And so I don't know if that maybe helps absolve of that question of, do I even need to do anything? What are your thoughts?
I think that is a good suggestion. We have not tried that directly, so I, I will look into that on the second mailing.
That's it. Thank you. Councilwoman Bennett. Councilman Reed?
Danny, thanks for the presentation. I was wondering if you could give us a brief synopsis, especially for the folks who are either here or listening or will see the recording, what, what could happen if they do have a garage conversion that is not permitted and they do not act prior to the end of the amnesty period? Kind of like the potential costs in a, a worst-case scenario?
Sure. So at the end of the program, it will go back to requiring compliance. So the current ordinance requires you to have a garage. And if you want to convert your garage, you have to construct another one. Or you have to re-convert your garage back if you've already converted it. And typically, we require that when somebody comes in to do a remodel or an addition or a major change to their home. We will work with them to try to come into compliance with their, their garage if they do not have one. So if people that don't apply for that, we would go back to getting compliance in that direction.
So basically, just to summarize, if they don't, if they have an unpermitted conversion, they don't take advantage of the amnesty and something happens down the road where they need permitting, which could be even for a roof, a roof replacement or something like that. And it's found out that it's unpermitted, they would be required to either convert back or build another garage.
So it wouldn't necessarily be a roof permit because we do those over the counter. So we wouldn't see that they had converted their garage with a roof permit. It would be more major items, yeah.
Bad example on my part, but thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Danielle. So I too have seen some confusion on social media with people that they don't know what to do, or they have aged parents that don't understand their house is built without a garage way back in the whatevers, right? So there, there's, so there's some misconceptions out there, misinformation as well because others try to jump in and answer their questions and they don't know the answers. They're just answering questions. Let's say I got one of these flyers or I got one and I threw it away, but I know I have a garage conversion. What's the very first thing that I should do as a resident?
So most of them have been calling us and asking questions and we direct them.
So they can call City Hall?
Call City Hall. They can do a public information request to see if they have a permit or if they don't have a permit. And then if they don't know, and then once they know that, if they, they can apply online or they can come into the city and apply for the permit with a floor plan. And it can be a simple floor plan. It doesn't have to be architectural. We just need a floor plan drawn up of your home that labels your rooms, what, so that we can see, you know, what you're using your rooms for, what is that garage conversion being used for?
So even as a homeowner, sorry to interrupt, but I want to make sure I'm clear. Even as a homeowner, in order to find out if my property that has a garage conversion was permitted maybe or not before I bought it, whenever that was, I have to submit a public information request.
Yes.
That can be a little bit ominous for some people because you have to set up an account and make the request and there's kind of a lot to that. So I can call City Hall, I can do a public information request, or I can just come up here with a drawing of my floor plan of my house.
Yes, and a site plan.
And a site plan.
Right. So a site plan can be a property survey. A lot of homeowners get a property survey when you purchase your home.
Right.
A lot of people that have come up here have expressed that they don't have that because they bought their home many, 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 many years ago and they don't have it anymore if they ever received it. So we try to guide them to either do a Google Maps view of your property. It just kind of gives us an idea of what we're looking at. And, or something, a screenshot from D-CAD of their property or something like that. So we accept that either way. And then you just apply for the permit. It goes through a really quick review and, and then an inspection.
Okay. So I would say the moral of the story is the city is flexible in helping people in various ways to try and take advantage of the program, comply with the ordinance, and then not get caught in another six months without having a permit for a garage conversion. Okay? Thank you.
I'm here to help them however I can. We get lots of questions and spend a lot of time on the phone trying to help people move, you know, get them into, to where they understand and to where we can help them so they can apply.
And I have seen some comments, to your credit, I've seen some comments on Facebook where people have said, just go to the city. They're really nice people. They'll help you.
Thank you.
Councilman Neal?
Thank you, Danielle, for the presentation. You're doing a great job. I also get the same affirmative comments about you and the team helping residents when they come. So just so the residents here and those who may be watching, how many months do we have remaining? We have another 12 months remaining, is my understanding?
It's another 12 months.
About 12 months from now, we still have this amnesty program. Okay.
It expires January 31st of 2026.
January 30th, okay, great. And I, I have a constituent has a somewhat odder situation. I'm not sure how to direct them. And that was, they, they've been identified as having a garage conversion, but they have put it back so that it's now a garage. How do they get removed from the list that you understand as them having this, this conversion?
I would just have them contact me.
Just give you, okay.
Right. Because we may not have a record of that.
Because they converted it back, they had the permits done, electrical, all that sort of stuff. All those who have been passed, but they're still getting a flyer and a letter that says you've been identified as garage conversion. I just try and understand the process.
Sure. I mean, I know the first mailing that we went out and the water bill went to everybody. Everybody in the city that has a water bill. The ones that we are sending out since then have just been the ones that we know have conversions, but that one might be one that through research and stuff, we, we weren't looking for that kind of thing. We were looking for, do you have a permit for garage conversion? So I'd be happy to talk, to help them if you have them contacting me.
Great, great. The other thing I have is of those that have applied and you've granted, was it 42 or so? Did they have an inspection to be granted, those 42 or so? Did they, did somebody go out there and evaluate their conversion?
Yes. Yes, that's when a permit is issued. That means that it's gone through the whole process. They've had their inspection and, and they now have their permit, so they don't have to worry about complying with the garage requirement in the future.
And so of those 42, how many had other issues identified, such as an electrical problem or something water, I don't know?
So there's only a few of them, like I would say maybe five or six. So it's very small that have minor problems.
So majority is really no issues. They shouldn't be too concerned. Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Danielle, I apologize now because anybody who's ever asked me about this program, I say, call Danielle. She knows everything. Call Danielle. So that's, there's your workload right there.
I try.
So, all right.
Thank you.
Next up is item C9, which is receive an update from the mayor and council members regarding board liaison information from outside organizations and other meetings attended. Councilman Roman, Councilwoman Bennett. Councilman Reed?
Just want to go through, I attended the monthly board meeting for Metrocrest Services and they gave me some, some great numbers in regards to the service that they've been providing to Farmers Branch residents. I'm just going to go through this real quickly. I know we're, we're taking a bit of time. So over the, from October 24 to January 25, they've provided around 3,600 supportive services to residents. 3,500 residents accessed the nutritional food programs and, which included 320,000 pounds of foods that were distributed equalling 268,000 meals. 504 children received Christmas gifts and winter coats through their holiday program. 22 households were provided workforce and financial education services. 44 families were provided emergency rent and utility assistance for a total of $40,000. 560 meals were delivered to homebound seniors. And 37 Farmers Branch residents provided 1,216 hours of volunteer service, which is great because we're giving, we thank those that are giving back to the, to the community with their, with their hours. The, and just want to announce that their 20th Annual Key Holder Breakfast will be on April 3rd. City of Farmers Branch is one of the many sponsors in that, so they extend their thank you to us. And we're also working with Dallas College to expand the workforce programs. The college offers onsite at Metrocrest. And then lastly, the Metrocrest Job Fair will be held on February 26th. There'll be approximately 25 employers, 25 employers onsite. So that's what I have from them. Where will it be? It'll be at the Metrocrest Services.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jackson? Councilman Neal?
Yes, I've been attending a few of the Oakbrook HOA meetings. They're excited about their water meter projects, so I'm hoping that we can keep that moving forward. They're all excited in the presentation for tonight. And the only other thing is I've been going to several of the Firehouse Theater board meetings. They're excited about their new year of shows and I just want to encourage everybody to get out and see a show or two. And if it so be it, please purchase a season pass and see all the shows. So we got a little taste of it tonight. So I encourage everyone to support the Firehouse Theater. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Our report, mayor's been busy since the last council meeting. Five Star Ford had their chili cook-off and I was honorary judge for that, which was a lot of fun. Every month, I have two mayor's breakfasts. One is our local mayors, which is Carrollton, Addison, Carrollton, Capel, Farmers Branch, and Irving. We get together as a small group. And then we also have the Metroplex Mayor's Breakfast, which is comprised about 39 cities, 37 cities, and talk about things on a more global scale for the Metroplex. Our mayor's breakfast, we're having discussion about redevelopment going on in our city, in each of our cities. And so we're going to continue that discussion and, and just bounce ideas off of each other. I attended the Regional Transportation Commission meeting. Do that every month just to hear what's happening in our part of town because we're surrounded with three highways and with all the money that is being pumped into North Texas and North Dallas County for moving people quickly and efficiently, this is very important. So the I-35 project, the expansion project falls under the RTC. It's a text dot project. It is on schedule and they swear by that. So we will be continuing to hold their feet to the fire. I attended a Builders of Hope Open House that was put on. Councilman Roman hosted that, meeting and discussion with folks that were interested in the Builders of Hope program. And if you don't know about it, it's a great program. We've just begun to sort of tap the surface of that with the five homes that we've donated or that are being built, I should say, by Builders of Hope here in the Valley Park area. I met with Dr. Hopkins, who's president of Dallas College Brookhaven Campus. She would like to have a meeting with our whole council so they can lay out their initiatives for the council. I think it's very important that we try to get that scheduled because they're such a vital partner to our, our economy here in Farmers Branch. Something that I've been working on for the past year is Kenan Cemetery. It's essentially full. And so I've been trying to develop a columbarium project to put in at the Kenan Cemetery. I will be sharing that presentation with you all just very shortly. But I did have a meeting last week, another meeting with the folks from the columbarium company and John Brooks from North Dallas Funeral Home. This thing is continuing to pick up momentum. I've actually had some residents who have gotten wind of this to say, hey, when's this going to be available? You know, we have a lot of people who lived here, some their whole life, and they want to stay here for their eternal life, but we don't have room for earthly burials. So we need to be able to provide an alternative for them. And putting a columbarium at Kenan Cemetery would be an excellent way to honor them and allow them to stay their eternal days here. The Chamber of Commerce, Metrocrest Chamber of Commerce had a women's luncheon and that was pretty well attended. They've been doing this on a quarterly basis, bringing in speakers that'll talk about things that are relevant to women, women's success in business. And there are men that attend, so if you're a chamber member and you'd like to go, you should go. I did have, along with Councilman Reed, we took Gary Slagle, who is the chairman of the Board of DART, on a little tour of Farmers Branch, mainly the station area, but we also ventured around to some other areas. Later this week, we are going to be having a development tour, along with P&amp;Z bus tour, to look at some developments. One of the stops that we're going to be making is at the DART station. So I'll share more of our conversation with council and P&amp;Z members at that time. But we have been in a lot of discussions with... DART, trying to figure out, what is the next move for the station area, and how do they participate with us in terms of redevelop- redevelopment for that, uh, site. I did go to a ribbon cutting in Addison, at Epic Flight Academy, which is at Addison Airport, uh, I was invited by, uh, the Metro Crest Chamber of Commerce to be there, pretty neat flight school there, and as somebody who is a pilot, uh, I, I could definitely appreciate what was going on, so I thank, uh, Addison and the Chamber for inviting me. This past Saturday, uh, Councilman Jackson, Reed, and Neil and I attended the Fire Department Annual Awards Ceremony, what a great event. Uh, we have, as you saw this evening, we have really good employees in the Fire Department, and, uh, and we saw that on Saturday night, just a great group of people on an opportunity to meet their families and whatnot, so thank you to the Fire Department for inviting us to that. Monday, they, uh, the Branch Connection had its, uh, first Monday breakfast, but it was at the Rec Center, and so I think they had about sixty-five that attended that, so we hope we can get that attendance boosted up here, and we're trying to get the Branch Connection finished as quickly as possible, so please be patient. Yesterday, I had a meeting with Dallas Cotham, Dallas is a developer, he's president of a company called Master Plan, I did not have this meeting to try to achieve anything for the city, and my sole purpose for having this meeting was to better educate myself about project development and what could be, so I've been, uh, engaging with local developers to pick their brain, because one, I want to be educated, and when we have conversations, and especially like what we're going to have on Thursday with the bus tour, I want to be able to speak intelligently about things that are important to our city. Uh, and then lastly, the owners of, uh, the old Tuesday morning site on Inwood, which is now called Inbound on Inwood, contacted me, they have a client that they are trying to bring to that building, which I think would be a very good addition for the city. It'll be announced at the proper time, but, uh, they've completely renovated that site, and, uh, we need to get, uh, a business that's definitely going to benefit our city to come there and, and occupy that space. So that's all I have. Next up, C ten.
One, one last thing, just a reminder that last Tuesday, we had the State of the City.
Oh, yes.
Address as well, which was extremely well attended, um, all the seats were filled, we had people overflow into the, uh, into the lobby, so we really appreciate the folks who showed up, and the folks who later viewed the recording, and, uh, their desire to see what's, uh, what's happened in the city, what we're looking to do, and, uh, simply participating, um, in, in, uh, the, the, uh, recent history and the future of the city.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up. Next up is C ten, which is review and discuss future agenda items, Councilman Roman?
Um, yes, I have a few, so I wanted to have a discussion about a zoning overlay on the eastern part of my district, um, the second item is, uh, I want to have a discussion to consider adopting a non-discrimination policy.
A what?
And, a non-discrimination policy, and then the next one is, I'd like to request a future agenda item to discuss how our city, consistent with other nearby agencies, can enhance communication efforts to encourage residents, particularly those who may be targeted by recent immigration enforcement efforts to report crimes to law enforcement, ensuring that all residents feel safe coming forward as victims or witnesses, and is ess- is essential to public safety. I'd like to explore ways to reassure our community that the local law enforcement is focused on protecting victims and upholding justice regardless of immigration status. I look forward to the opportunity to collaborate on effective outreach strategies. And that's it.
Councilwoman Bennett?
I'd like to, um, have a future agenda item for cast iron water mains, an update on that, for the, cast iron water mains.
Cast iron. Okay, Councilman Reed?
Nothing at this time.
Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, I would like, and I, and I see this as an urgent, uh, future agenda item, the next council meeting if possible, but I'd like to report in a presentation from the city manager regarding, uh, staff turnover listed by department. I'd also like for you to wrap into that some of the hiring challenges, uh, some reasons for departures, I know we're not going to discuss personnel issues here, but I think it's necessary at this point, given, um, the turnover, uh, and, and the timeframe, I'd like you to start as January first, twenty twenty-four, uh, that we understand the departures, particularly among directors that have left the city over the past year, and, uh, all of that to get an idea of, get a pulse on the culture here at City Hall. Second item is, I'd like to get, um, sort of connected to what I was saying earlier, a report from Chief McCoy about our number of patrol vehicles, and this is sort of a, prior to going into budget discussions, um, big question is, do we have enough, uh, to address the traffic and patrol issues that we have in our city? You guys are doing a fantastic job, um, but as I see some numbers from some other municipalities, um, I feel like we may want to make some room in our budget, and, and some of that's going to center around your programs to address the issues, but we need to get an assessment, do we have enough police patrol vehicles in our city? And then connected to that is, um, I'd like to have a public discussion, uh, on red light It's a pretty chronic issue, um, I'm sure it is in many cities, but I've had resident phone calls and experienced myself, issues, and I think it'd be good to have an open discussion around red light runners, hotspots in our city, how our lights function, um, statistics, how to be safe, uh, in the intersections, given the rise, uh, at least from what I'm seeing and hearing in red light runners. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Neil?
Yes, sir, I have a few, thank you, um, I was wondering if I can get an update from city staff on the current situation with the fire hydrant paintings that's, that's underway, seems as though the main roads have been done, but I'd like to know where we are, what's the plan to get into the neighborhoods, when that will occur, uh, their expected, uh, completion dates, um, that's something I'd like us to get an update on, um. Next item I have, I'd like to have some discussions regarding crosswalk safety, I know that we've had a few sort of off and on discussions up here at council regarding some areas in Mercer Crossing, across Valley View, uh, Josie Rawhide area, Webb Chapel and Golfing Green, um, I'd like us to at least identify those and put them down as a project, so that we here at council can address the public safety issues regarding crossing these, these major highways, so, um, I'd look, to look forward to something in that area. Um, something that I had asked about a couple of months ago was to get an update on a policies and procedures manual, do we have those for each of the departments, I'd like to know where that stands, if they're available, or we completed that, when that might be completed if not, and that information. The next item I'd like to have is, I'd like to have an update on the Branch Connection, and like to know if we're still on schedule to be opened in March, April, springtime, and if not, what are we doing to address any delays we might be having there? Uh, another item, I'd like to have a, a council discussion and consideration of an ordinance regarding vacant homes, um, as to vacant homes, as to how long a home can be permitted to remain vacant without something being done to move forward on that, I had some discussions here during the State of the City, that there might be some options available to us as a city to, uh, help with some of the properties that have been remaining vacant and, and in the neighborhoods, so I'd like us to pursue that. Um, I'd also like council to have a discussion, and we don't have to have it right now, but I'd like us to discuss the limitation that we have on the city manager regarding his expenditures of fifty thousand dollars, I'd like to have a discussion to determine whether that is too high or too low, and have us review and consider, uh, that, that limitation. And that should be it for, thank you.
Okay, I just want to remind everybody, you know, we talked about work-life balance for our city manager a while back, and all of this adds to that, we need to give him a break, so.
I'm sorry, sorry, Mayor, I got one more thing, I was going to add to that, do we really need an entire staff that we see out here every time twenty, we can talk about that another time, but in light of the work-life balance comment, we have an awful lot of staff here, I'm sure they'd rather be somewhere else than here.
Um, it's easy for me to sit up here and try to run a meeting and get distracted and forget to do something, and I did earlier, I forgot to do something, so I'm going to go back to the, uh, I'll say items of community interest, and because staff is still here, uh, I just wanted to add a, a note that I didn't get to say earlier, and that is, um, at the State of the City, uh, presentation, a citizen stood before us at the State of the City and proceeded to spew her rhetoric that was inappropriate and derogatory. While any resident has the right to their opinion, to stand before the council, staff, and fellow residents, this is not the proper forum to launch into a personal attack on our employees in order to demean them. Shame on me for not admonishing the speaker at the moment that she did it, going forward as mayor, I run these meetings, and if I deem speaker is getting off track, I will stop them and give them a warning, if behavior persists, I will end their time and have them removed from the council chambers. I appreciate the job that all of our staff does, I'm sorry that that happened, and I will do my best to make sure that it doesn't happen again. So, with that, uh, we are going to recess and go back to executive session and finish the last couple of items, then we will be coming out to report any action as a result last couple of items, then we will be coming out to report any action as a result of that.
Okay, we are back. Thank you very much. At eight fifty-two, we only have one item that's come out of executive session, and that is item D three.
So may I make a motion to reject the ethics complaint filed on January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five?
May I second the motion?
We have a motion and a second. If you would please indicate your vote accordingly. Motion passes. Thank you very much. With that, we have no further business to report out of executive session. So we will end our meeting this evening at eight fifty-three. Thank you all very much.